I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a new system that we're all going to be getting used to here during this meeting for our agenda and our share file than we're used to. But on that, our longevity and reports, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at those. But we'll go ahead and consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none? Go ahead and move on. Are there any commissioners that would like to make an informational report?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Two things I want to talk about, just so the public is aware. Myself and Commissioner Landine met with applicants for the public defender position contracts that we have advertised for. Those were good discussions. We learned a lot. The applicants learned a lot. That allows us now to go back and fine tune what we could potentially offer. And I've had several people ask me, you know, what the status is and what the status of that process is, is we are now fine tuning what the offers will be. And hopefully, we achieve two different things with that process. The first is relative cost containment with regard to the expenses that we have to defending the indigent persons in criminal court. And the second hope of that is creating more stability with regard to defending these people and the number of attorneys that we have in working with the court system. So that's where we're at in that process. We're not finished yet, but we're getting closer. And then the second thing I wanted to mention for the public is, and it was mentioned earlier just now, we do have a new website that's come online. And if you want to sign up to receive the agendas to be sent to you automatically, you need to go to LincolnCountySD.org. You need to sign up. You need to create an account. And you can have every conceivable kind of notification, notice, emergency alerts, COVID updates, agenda items for these meetings, bids that we put out to the public. You can have all of those things sent to you automatically. And I've just been told by Sean, our clerk, that they're working on making that process even smoother as we speak. So we're hoping to have more functionality and more transparency coming out of that process.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins?
I know, I think we could strike an item off our agenda now, but that's all right.
Anybody else?
For those of you that follow agriculture, the Sioux Empire Livestock Show held its sale of champions. And as you know, they select the top of the different breeds, whether you are with, whether you're with Hereford's or whether you're with Limousine or anything else. This year, the top steer sold for $12,000, which was near a record. And the top swine sold for $5,300. The top goat brought $4,700, and the sheep brought around $5,000. And that money comes from the Sioux Falls business community, and they do not buy the animal itself. These are just what is in and above. It's kind of like a special royalty they get. So the animal is retained by the owner, but they do a lot of work. So the young lady that had the sheep brought down the house because she was dressed very, very nice. And I think there was a lot of people that bid more on having her presentation than anything. But it was a very successful show. And if none of you ever attended that, you should because it's really something. It highlights agriculture, but especially those engaged in animal production.
Thank you. Somebody else? All right. We'll move on to regular business. Mr. Golden? And I think on the broadcast, it's, we just need everybody to, I know that microphone's kind of low, but everybody needs to speak right into the microphone. And I'm fine if you take your mask off to do that, so everybody can hear what you're saying.
Okay. First item is the airport hangar Q7. It's a 1,700 square foot hangar. There are still three terms left in that lease agreement out of the 25 years. There's three five-year terms left. It's renting for $340 a year. It's at the 20 cents, or 20 square foot cents a foot. It is being transferred to a new owner. And so we're asking for you to approve the transfer and the lease of that hangar.
I move.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Move to authorize the transfer.
Second.
I do have a question.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are we required, are they required to record the selling price of those leases?
They have been because most of them are getting mortgages or they're getting loans. And so there's liens against the property and leases. So I believe that they're being filed with the Register of Deeds office on some of them. I don't know of any purely just cash transactions, and those would not be.
Okay. The only reason I asked several years ago, there was, with the equalization officer at the time, there was discussion of trying to find out what those properties were worth on leased property. And if they do require to give the purchase price, it would give us some grounds for valuing the properties. But thank you.
We could include that as part of our contracts. Or for, you know, as one of the requirements is to, for disclosure of the selling price.
Okay. Something to consider.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing no other comments or discussion. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have farmland lease?
Yes. There was a contact for the farmland that's south of the airports, 157 acres. That was the property that there was an easement that was granted for construction on that road here at the last meeting. There was an inquiry about whether or not they, I believe they had been farming it. They'd like to continue to. And so the request here is to put it out for bids, so that the person can bid on the property and farm it.
Thank you. You've heard the request. Is there a motion?
How many actual tillable acres are there? Is that 50, 55, something like that? Or are they going to bid on the whole 100 and some odd acres build, you know?
You've just exceeded all of my knowledge on this.
Okay, well, that's a good admission. No, but I always, always thought there was, I don't know, I always, always thought there were 50, 60 acres there that were available. So I'm sure they will, when people bid, they will have knowledge of that.
And I'll try to find that information out for you next time.
And I think, I think that's a little on the high side, but I'm, don't quote.
Buildable ground, I know that was approximately what it was.
I would move that we advertise to lease the property of near T.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just by way of discussion here, and we can put this on the agenda in future meetings, but I did have a good discussion with Commissioner Schmidt about this, about the possibility of creating in the future here a wetland bank, wetland credit bank using that slough area within this 157 acres. Now, whether or not it actually qualifies for a wetland credit bank, I don't know. I do know that, I think Commissioner Gibbon's had some contact with the NRCS. But I think that whatever we do in terms of leasing the property out, we want to make sure that we can also retain the ability, if we need to, to apply for a wetland credit bank, and if that's even a possibility. So I think those are, that's an option that we need to look into in terms of any contract or lease that we put together.
Madam Chair, for a brief moment, if I try to reach out to Toby Brown, I think he would refresh everybody's knowledge on what we're currently doing with this property. We're actually applying for a grant to do a full study on this. But if Toby's available, I'd like him to come down and remind everyone what we're trying to do with that property, which has been an ongoing project for quite some time, actually, so. Sean, were you able to reach in?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
We will. I'll call, we'll call you back up if we need to. We're going to hold on that till Toby comes down. We'll move on to the Infra Grant, item three on the agenda. Sean?
So back in January 2020, the board accepted an agreement with HDR for grant writing to help pay for the county's share of the 85th Street Interchange Project. In that agreement, in the scope of work, it stated that if they were unsuccessful in 2020, that they would reapply in 2021 for $5,000 to $8,000. The agreement before you now is that agreement. And, oh, my apologies, I didn't put the dollar amount in there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schmidt?
I looked up and had the original copy of the agreement, in which I just showed Commissioner Gibbon, that it does say in there that subsequent of not receiving the NOVA or the bill grant, that it would be for $5,000 to $8,000. I contacted Stephen Hoff from HDR and visited with him concerning both grants. And I want to share with you this morning, and with the public as well, that the two grants that this particular project on the 85th Street Interchange qualifies for are, is one, an Infra Grant. And the new rules that were written last year called the Infra Grant, unless you have a project of $100 million, you're really not going to get much consideration, because these are for huge ones. Bill grants, on the other hand, are for $25 million, of which we would, we have some certainly qualify for because it's a public-private collaboration between the two, and that they will submit this upon our signing. I also contacted the city of Sioux Falls to say that I would like to have somehow this second application be absorbed on a, on a basis of having the city of Sioux Falls, the Lincoln County, and the private landowners divvy that up, so it isn't, it isn't solely the responsibility of the county. That has not happened, but it will be a conference coming up in the very near future to do that. I can't tell you how that will be, but in the spirit of fairness, I think that's one of the things I would bring to them. The other thing that I wanted to share with you that has never really been talked about before, but you realize, of course, this is on the part of the state, is a $48 million project. And the state of South Dakota is committing for just, just one portion of it. They have about $2.5 million invested, and that will be for land acquisition. But that is just for land acquisition. They're standing all other expenses, which amount to a huge amount. The city of Sioux Falls is in for $5 million. And the people, the private developers are in for $5 million. And the county which led this whole thing and made it happen is about $8 million. So all of this combined will bring about almost $3 billion, with a B, worth of development into that 85th Street corridor. So when you look at long range, when you look at the county's future, and you look at the future for T, the school district for T, the city of Harrisburg, the school district for Harrisburg, this will be a tremendous boost to them to, or continue to supply through growth what they intend to do. So that's kind of a snapshot on this thing. We did sign the agreement, so I would move, Madam Chair, that we sign this agreement and move forward.
Yes.
We still have one motion on the floor, technically.
So either we withdraw that motion, or we have Toby with a quick statement.
Oh, we still have.
Yeah.
Oh, Toby?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, you are correct.
You're right. We do have the motions on the floor. We haven't acted on it because we were going to.
It's just an update on something we had taken action on, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. So I think it was November, December, you authorized staff to submit an application to FEMA, which staff did complete. There was some change to the paperwork that we had to complete. So it was completed within the last couple of weeks. That will be a study, feasibility study for detention on that site. And so we're anticipating the cost, that'd be about $30,000, with a 15% of it potentially being local cash that would be applied to it. I don't have a timeline for you. Most of the federal programs, the grant programs, as Commissioner Schmidt's talked about, are kind of up in the air right now with the new administration. But I hope to know probably in springtime if we can proceed with that project or that feasibility study.
Question that I had then, do you think that any leasing of the property would interfere with that application?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So there is a motion and a second on the floor to put this out for bids, for leasing the farmland for that property. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we'll move on to item three. Jim's already kind of given us a rundown on, on that Infra Grant.
I would move, our motion would be to sign and continue on with the application for the two grants that are available, and to move this project forward.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Who's going to handle item four? Sean, are you going to do that? Or Sherri, did you want to speak to that? I'm just, I had gotten that email from you, so I didn't know if you had anything to comment on about it.
What I know about it is that with John Hanson, when he was in solid waste, he was part of the board out there. And when he, when we closed it, he resigned his position. And according to the city of Sioux Falls landfill, we do need to have a representative appointed to that board.
And John was no longer wanting to do that?
No. Madam Chair?
My understanding.
I talked with both Johns.
Okay.
And we could either appoint John Rambo or John Hanson. My recommendation is that we should keep John on that particular waste planning board, since he's been on it for such a long, long time. And I talked with the director from the city, whose name is gone. But anyway, he was a valued member, and he was very good in attending all the meetings. So I don't know. My recommendation is we should just leave him on there, because he did a great job.
My, my, I'm not saying I'm opposed to that, but my question about that is, when he goes to these board meetings, since he's, is he, he's hourly?
Yes.
So then he's going to receive overtime for going to these meetings?
Yes.
What time of the day are the meetings?
They're at night.
So what, I mean, would it make more sense to make John or somebody that's going to be appointed, that's going to be doing these kinds of things, a salaried employee?
And John Rambo's also an hourly employee, so you run into the same situation.
How soon do we need to act on this?
I don't think there was, we weren't given direction as to how quickly to act. I think it just needs to be filled.
I don't know. What are the board's thoughts? I don't want, do you know what the hourly time commitment is?
Sean, do you know?
Back when I attended those meetings, they were about three hours or more.
How often?
I think they're either monthly or quarterly. It's been about a decade since I've been part of it.
Do you know, Sherri, if they're monthly?
I don't know.
Oh, it says right here they are quarterly.
But the, the buildings department already is overtime-heavy. So to create any additional, I think, would be a disservice.
Well.
Are we really talking here about, I don't know what John makes an hour. I don't know. But we're talking about three hours, four times a year. So that's 12 hours, right?
Yep.
I, and we've been doing it. He's been serving on it. I don't see, it's a big, a big issue to me. Maybe it is to some of you. I don't know.
I don't know. I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention.
I'm, I'm not so worried about the dollars that are spent. It's just that they already are putting in a lot of overtime and, and, you know, if there's some departments that just, they want so much overtime, and after that, they get burnt out. So I just urge caution on that, if his overtime numbers are so much that it burnt, you know, is troublesome for them.
Well, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't look at John Rambo's and John Hanson's hours and what their average is, and see if we can't come up with a, maybe a plan to put them as salaried employees. That maybe that would save the county money? Maybe it wouldn't. I don't know.
Madam Chair, I would move that we table this till next week's meeting and try to do some investigation on it.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
What was the motion again, Madam Chair?
To basically table this for some further discussion and looking into what would be the best cost savings for the county and fair to the employees as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have Mr. Oakland.
Good morning, Jake.
Good morning.
I do want to say outright that I think you guys put a lot of work into the website, and I think it looks great.
Yeah, after a long year in 2020 with COVID and developing a new website, it was pretty stressful, but we got it done. Otherwise, today, I just wanted to officially announce that Lincoln County has a new website, too. It's been up for a couple of weeks now. We've got a majority of the bugs worked out. And we will continually updating it and improving it. But just kind of go over some overviews of what the new website can do, just for you and for the public out there. The new website has great notification system, just like Commissioner Aaron spoke about earlier. We have an ability for citizens to sign up and get information on our agendas, our minutes, whenever we post those. We also have alerts for when the event of a closure, bids, RFPs, all of that in there. So I encourage everybody to sign up for that, and they can pick and choose what they would like to get that information.
Can you, is there a way you could just show us real quick what's the easiest way to get signed up?
Yeah. So over at the top of the screen, you have a create an account. All you have to do is hit the sign in button over on the right. The people on the live stream, this is their main screen, so they can see this.
Sure.
You just hit sign in over there. And in here, you can hit create an account. It asks for basic information, just an email address and I think an address in there. If you'd like, there is a little bit of an improvement we're working on. If you'd like to sign up for the agendas, you'd have to go to the back to the main Lincoln County page, go to agendas and minutes, scroll down just a little bit, and hit login or manage. And then in here, you'll have to click create an account. We're working on getting an integration where the two will work together, and that's coming out in March. But just so that we can get everybody signed up and get ready to go on there, you can sign up for agendas and minutes there. You can also pick what boards and committees you would like to get that notification on.
Awesome. Oh, I think it looks great.
We've kind of broken it out more. 4H has a great new redesign of how their site was working. They have a little bit of unique setup to them, so we wanted to make sure that they have the ability to recruit people, get information out there for them, and easy access. Otherwise, other departments we went through and reviewed, the sheriff has a separate page now. They're interlinked with us, but they have a separate page that they will be filling with tons of information that'll be beneficial for them. Another huge feature that we have, if we go back to the homepage, is the bids and RFPs. Like we said before, you can sign up here to receive notifications, but it lists out all the bids and RFPs that we have for Lincoln County. And it'll put their active status, closed status, and then all of the rules that we have for them to send in the bids and RFPs. Another good feature that we have for the citizens is we have different areas where we provide different services, applications and permits, just different areas where if you're not quite sure what you're looking for or what department it's in, you can find it. We have a how do I, it lists many of the topics on there. The other thing that we added in here is applicants, applications and permits. Here, we just listed out all the applications and permits that we have. In case a citizen doesn't know what department it'll be in, it'll just be there for them to be able to access that. One other thing that we are improving on is we will be doing as much as we can to make digital signatures. Everybody can find everything online and apply for everything online. That's the next phase of the website to get that done, and we're really excited about that. I hope our citizens are as well. Voter information was improved, is an improvement, and interactive maps. The interactive maps, we're doing a big improvement on there so that if you're looking for a certain information on a commissioner districts, you can click on that commissioner district link, and it'll open up the map and it'll show the districts in there, so it's interactive. So then you can search your property, and then you know exactly where your property lies with the commissioner districts or legislative districts or school districts. That's something that we will be improving on there. Other than that, it's, we have done a lot, and it's been a process. It's been fun. I enjoyed it. Anything from you that you'd like to see more for less of?
Not as I sit here. I think the integrations that you're looking at doing are a good idea, and I look forward to seeing those, as I'm sure everyone does.
I think the big thing that I'm really excited about is the agendas and minutes page. Having that all on there is just amazing. We are in the process of importing our old agenda and minutes into this module down here. That was going to take some time, but we didn't, we wanted the public to start using the new system as soon as they could, because the system is great, and we didn't want to wait for the old to get in there. But the old minutes are up above, and up above on the link here where you can view the archive center for the minutes and agendas. So otherwise, everything in 2021 is currently on the system.
Is this, the Planning Commission, now they're going to start having their livestreamed or the videos available as well? Is that correct?
You are correct. Yep. We are starting that this month. And they will also have their Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes and agendas also in the same page in there. So flexibility for everybody.
Other than that?
Jake, I was.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. I was quickly trying to go through this, and I know we're coming up on appeal timeline. Have you had a chance to visit with the equalization officer to see if all of the appeal process contact information? I know I get a lot of calls on who is it? How do I get ahold of them? It may be in here. I haven't had a time, but I know that's an important thing. If we can try to work with that and get that in there, whether it be city officials, you know,
know, for each town and/or the township supervisors, phone numbers. I did notice that the phone numbers for those supervisors aren't on there for the townships. So if there's a way we can integrate in that into our system of who that contact is depending on what township or what city they're at into the website, that would save a lot of phone calls, I think, to me, which is not a bad thing to have phone calls, but it's something we could easily have integrated into our system and it may be here, I just didn't see it, so.
Yes, so that is actually a project, it's a fresh project of a couple of weeks ago. We are completely updating how we do the appeals process. We, when the assessment notices, I'm not sure if Carla's here, but assessment notices when they're being sent out, if they go to appeal.lincolncountyac dot org and you search your property, it'll take you to your property. You can click on the link, it'll have, it'll take you to your property where, whatever jurisdiction you're in, the city or township. You click that link, it'll give you the information of how to appeal for your jurisdiction or your jurisdiction you're in. And from there, you can click a button to actually appeal online. So we would have a full digital form that they could send it. And then what that will do is it will notify the equalization office and the local board clerk that there's an appeal for that area. And then from there, once they're done with that process and the local boards is completed, they can go back to that link and then appeal for the county board if they choose so, choose so, which then when they fill that online application, it'll also send an email to the Lincoln County Equalization Office with that.
Cool.
So that is some huge improvement that we're doing and the townships were, townships and cities were really on board with that. They're really excited because it helps with monitoring the information so that, they were worried about getting it mailed to them because every time a clerk changes, the address changes or the PO box changes or it's something, just if there's a disconnect there. So if we could do it by email, it's so much easier just to be, this is your email address. We're sending it right there.
Sounds great. Will we have that implemented by?
We will have that implemented by next month when, or when the appeals, or when equalization sends out their assessment notices. It'll be 100% working by then.
Thank you to everyone who involved with that, so.
Really excited about that one.
Any other questions for Jake about the new website? All right, hearing none, we'll just move on to item six. Thank you, Jake.
Yes.
Thank you, Jake.
Our auditor, good morning again.
Good morning. Okay, so first of all, I want to thank Jake for all the hard work he's done between the website and civic clerk. It's really streamlining everything. His department has worked tirelessly on this. With that being said, with the improvements of the website and everything, we'd like to implement a new way of doing the agenda. So what we would like to do is we're going to put all meetings, hearings or anything on a time constraint as to start, the wording will say to start between 8:35 a.m. and the adjournment of the meeting. What this will do is it will allow us to stay in step in the agenda without taking long breaks when you're waiting till 10 o'clock to open a bid. So basically, all the time stuff is going to be at the beginning of the agenda, after public comment, after the commissioner's input. So then, because you can start it at, put it 8:35, but then you can start it at nine. So it'll stay in, so you're not going to miss out on the public comment, commissions things or anything like that. It's just going to keep the agenda in flow. So as people are watching it, live streaming it or whatever, they can follow the agenda in the order we are instead of being, where are we at in the agenda?
That's awesome because I was thinking that at our last meeting, we had about a 30-minute, 40-minute break.
Yes. Yeah, well, and I've seen a couple since I've been in here where it's, there's been a big break between them, so. And it will keep the hearings, people that want to come in for the hearings, they're going to get done right away. They're not going to have to wait for the regular business to go through.
Sure.
Yeah, Sherri, I think it's a good idea, especially with regard to sealed bids. You know, we're sitting in here till 10:30 when we have all our business done at 9:15.
Yep.
And just out of curiosity, is there a requirement that the deadline has to be set for the day of the commission meeting or is it possible to set it for the day before and then, how does that work?
Sean and I have talked about that and we were talking about having the opening on Monday and then reading the results during the bid, or I mean during the open meeting.
Sure.
So I don't think they have to be necessarily open at the meeting. We can do them on Mondays and then do the results on Tuesday.
I think that would streamline the business of the county greatly. And it would give the people a better, quicker answer too, so.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. I think Highway does that quite often, don't they? Where they'll have the bids on a certain day and then they get back to us with the report of how they came out, don't they?
Yep, yeah, yep. So if everybody's okay, then that's how we're going to proceed with the agendas.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Item seven, Commissioner Schmidt?
Well, I'm going to say right off from the bat that I'm going to move to table this for this week. But I have a couple of comments and I have also, if either Susan or Julia want to make a comment, they can. I have spent a lot of time looking into their respective roles because many times we get requests for an assistant. And we can pass that off and saying it's not necessary or because everybody thinks they should have an assistant. But from time to time, you, we all need to spend a little more time finding out what their job prospects really are and how much time it really takes to accomplish that. They are both independent department, one-person department heads. And here's where, here's where I come down on this. For example, for Susan, and you all know my, I have a very passion for veterans. I'm not one myself, but that's another story. But I do have great respect for anybody that has served for our country. And I believe that we have an obligation to provide them with every service possible. But when you see our veteran service officer not being able to see veterans and is mired down in administrative responsibilities, I don't think that that's serving the public very well. So that's why I put together or had listened to Susan's appeal or application or want an assistant. Julia, on the other hand, Julia has a one-person department and whether we realize it or not, we got about 17% turnover. There's a lot of recruitment that's going on. I had a chance to talk to the sheriff and what really amazed me was the recruitment that she was able to put out because we're hiring people from all over the United States today. We have, I don't know, Vermont or something like that. Literally, how that all got out there just didn't happen by accident. And it takes a great deal of time because there's a lot of applications that have to go through, background checks that has to go through. So consequently, rather than trying to just put this on today and just saying from my vantage point, they certainly deserve to have some kind of assistance on there. Those two worked out a program where they would share a person on an 80/20 basis, which Susan getting 80%, 80% and Julie getting 20%, which I thought was a pretty good compromise. So rather than vote on that today, I asked them to send to you, the commission, their jobs, all the details that they have and how they need that kind of assistance. So you can evaluate that, you can look at it, you've got a chance to talk to them individually to find out their situation. And then next week, I'm putting it back on the agenda for a vote. Because from my vantage point, that's money well spent. Now, Susan or Julia, do you have any comments you want to make today or anything like that? If not, that's fine, you don't have to.
I think if we're going to have it on the agenda, maybe, maybe the next time it'd be better.
All right.
Madam Chair, just for, I believe there was a motion, I'll second that motion.
To table.
Yep.
Any other discussion about tabling the motion? Hearing none, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we have Commissioner Gibbon and Mr. Brown.
Yes, as you realize, we do have a resignation in District Two on the planning and zoning board. And someone on that commission contacted me that they had received from someone information that they would be interested in serving. And so that name was relayed to me. I went ahead and contacted that person, visited with that person to find out if they were willing to serve and why and so on and so forth. As a result, I know I, I feel confident that this person would do a good job. I'd be willing to nominate that person. I guess the main thing is, at the same time though, if you would like to advertise to see if there's any others that would possibly be interested before I make an appointment, I'd be willing to do that as well. Otherwise, I will probably be submitting a name next week. So I'm just asking for a little direction here. I've heard what's been done in the past. I just wanted to know if that was the continuation of the path we'd like to follow and so on and so forth.
I think in the past, what we've done is advertised so everybody knows it's open and can apply for it and then we'll, we can make a vote on whoever we think is qualified to do that. So I, I'm sure probably who you have in mind might be just fine and maybe we won't get any applications, but I do think we should advertise. Any other thoughts?
Well, when they advertise, they have to make sure they're in Commissioner Gibbon's district.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So it is an open at-large situation. It has to live within the confines of, of course, you have.
Yes, we already have an at-large position in District Two. And so I guess if that's the route we'd like to take with opening it up for, I don't know what the time period would be, we can do that.
I would respect your wishes to nominate whoever you want as long as they meet the background check. It was done in the past.
Yeah, I'm content.
And so if you have somebody that's willing to serve, that saves us a lot of time. I think a lot of the reason that we went to advertising was a public notification, but it was also that we, we struggled to find people that would volunteer. So if you have someone that is qualified and willing and, and we can forego with the formality, I'm, I'm, I'm more than want to respect that, your wishes to nominate whoever you would like for your, for your district.
And I'd be willing to nominate that person next week at the meeting and put it on the agenda if that's the direction we'd like to follow.
A follow-up, Commissioner Poppins, it was always the prerogative of an individual that served from an individual district to more or less secure an individual. That was part of their job, at least. That's what I grew up with here. And I think, Commissioner Gibbon, I think you're vetting of that individual I'm comfortable with.
So please, if, if I may, Madam Chair, just bring that name forward and if you can, I don't know if the, Julia, can in a week period, can we get it checked, verified and all of that through the?
You can do a state background check.
Yep. Okay. So that by next week, we could have that done. Bill, you got any objections? You can, okay. Okay. Thank you.
We will go ahead. I'll relay that name to Madam Auditor then. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item nine.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first is to end the employment of William Winter, 911 dispatcher effective the 23rd of January.
So moved. Second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next is to accept the resignation of Kiri Odell, property technician in the Department of Equalization effective the 25th of February.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And lastly is to follow up on our discussion regarding the FICRA leave or the COVID leave. Wondering if you would like to extend that until March 31st, which is the deadline to do so for employers? Or if you would like that to be done and complete?
Did we receive any more, was any more additional guidance issued by the federal government on?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So at this point, it's a waiting game.
I would move that we extend to March 30, extend it to March 31st?